Monthly meeting of the Lebanon Town Council for the month of November. We're pleased to have with us the senior, Mr. Justin Homemaker, pastor at Lebanon Community Fellowship. If we could authorize for an indication, follow up with his allegiance. Justin, thank you for being here.
It's an honor. Let's pray together. Father, we come before you and we thank you so much for all that you've done for us, Lord. We come with an attitude of thankfulness today. Thankfulness to be here together, thankfulness for being alive and being nestled in the beauty of this valley, Lord. I gotta ask right now that you would be with us, be with the town council, these men and women, all those involved here today as they're presiding over our town. We thank you for their energy to serve, their willingness to serve, Lord. We ask that you would bless them as they make decisions that affect so many, Lord. We pray that you would have, that they would have divine guidance and that they would have hearts that work in one accord to bring about your will and your plan for this town. I pray that you would be with us all, protect us. Lord, we again, we thank you for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon us here in this town. We don't take it lightly, Lord, that we're so fortunate to be here. We ask that you would be with us. We ask you to just remind us of your beauty again. And we thank you for Jesus, thank you for his place in our lives. We pray all this in his glorious name. Amen.
Please allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the peaceful, and living, and justice for all. Justin, thank you very much. We appreciate you being here. Okay, we got items on the agenda to edit for business. It's not on the agenda. Does any council member have any items to add?
Mr. Homemaker, about the Christmas parade that Monday evening, start town responsibilities for parade, Santa Claus.
Do you think Thanksgiving, yeah?
Thanksgiving, yeah.
Any other items to add to the agenda?
Mayor, were you talking about the rest of the contract under the town manager's report?
I believe so.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
And I believe we need to add the, what's that association called? Appalachian Soccer Association donation. The hearing now is our motion to approve the agenda as amended. Is there a second?
A second.
Further discussion? All those in favor of the motions, say aye. Close things aye. We have received the minutes for the October 12 regular meeting and the November 4 call meeting. We have minutes for both those in our agenda. Does everyone have a chance to review those? Do you hear a motion that we approve the minutes for those two meetings?
I'll make a motion.
Have a motion and have a second.
So have we.
One second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close things aye. We're now down to approval of accounts payable, asset purchases. Mr. Short, do you have any additions that you need to bring forward, counsel? Mr. Gilmour, Chair of Finance, do you have any items that you need to discuss?
We do, Mayor. Mr. Mike Akers turned in expense list for downtown revitalization reimbursement. As you recall, he was a participant in our facade program. DHCD denied his request to reimburse him for materials because he would have needed to let DHCD or the town purchase those materials. He purchased the materials himself. He actually requested for labor and materials to be reimbursed. I'd like to include the materials only in the accounts payable for reimbursement for Mr. Akers under DHCD, downtown revitalization project.
In that format, it's the same guidelines for office participants.
That's great.
Materials only.
That's great. And he did produce receipts for materials.
Okay. You have a motion to approve the accounts payable as amended?
So have we, Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
He was denied for the fact that he turned in labor and materials, correct?
He got ahead, he started, it's one of those loopholes, one of those check marks. He went ahead and started his work and got the materials before approval across the mountain.
Okay. But he was denied due to turning in the labor.
Yeah.
The materials are covered in the contract.
Correct.
Okay. Want to clarify that.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close things aye. We have with us tonight Cuba Porter and Harvey and county administrator for PSA. So this, you all are now up on the agenda. Who wants Cuba or you, you want to come forward or Harvey or who? All three of you come up?
Lonzo here for more. Thank you, Mayor, for having us, our town council. I've been speaking with the mayor. We were looking at the contract we have with the town for water, for this town PSA. And one thing that hasn't been done in several years, for just probably our fault, is an audit on the cost for the water. According to our contract, we were supposed to request it. And that we all request and had to request it. I think what we paid Lebanon is $420,000, $450,000. Most of our, well, all of our others, people who buy water, probably less, we pay Tazza County $270,000 for $1,000, and that's with Richmond, is that correct? And I think $290,000 for Tazza County PSA. We pay Homemaker $250,000. Of course, there's a difference, you know, with the water. The water we're asking is for an audit to look at the cost, the actual cost. You know, when this agreement was amended 20, which 20 years ago, when you guys said, well, there's debt and a lot of things involved in it. Now, I think that would have to be much better. And also with...
We're taking more water than we used to be, too.
Yeah. And I know that the production of water has improved. It's got to be better and more efficient than it used to be. But what we're asking the guys is to look at it and help us out some. We're looking, we want to expand our system and we're looking at that. But it needs to be more cost efficient for us, you know? We're going to expand, you know, we've got a little bit of capacity left for a few funds, but we should expand this and we're actually doing a project down on Tazza County Road that'll start pretty soon. And we're hoping to expand around 58. But we're going to have, we're probably need more capacity and we need, we need a better cost. If you guys look back and see what you can do to help us.
Okay. Well, procedurally, what will happen unless the council changes, having moved forward with this, I would request that the water pursuit committee, which is a standing committee in the town, would meet with Drew and address the audit request and procedures, how that happens when we move forward and let us look at it.
Sure.
Do you all get any water from Washington County at all?
We sell.
So it's Homemaker, Richlands, and Tazza County PSA.
Yeah, we're selling Washington County right now.
You're selling water?
Yeah, I could have about it.
I hate to ask you to repeat it.
No, fine.
Give me, give me the Richlands rate.
$270,000.
Tazza County?
About $285,000, $290,000.
And Homemaker?
$250,000.
We do buy occasionally Castlewood, and the only time we go off to St. Paul is if we have an emergency, we lose a tank or something like that happens. I think it's about $3,000.
$30,000.
It's high. They've got us down early, I don't know if it's, you know, you don't know where else. You know, the situation with us is, as we expand our system and we hope to, it's a difficult time, we have a lot of debt, but we're trying to handle that right now. But as we expand it, we're going to have to do better, have a better price of water in order to do that. And then hopefully, in a later time, as we're planning, come back to you and ask for more prices. Because I think you all have the ability, I think Drew will talk to give us more water. So I appreciate everything you guys can do. Be, I think probably you guys have seen it, there's a point, Drew, my understanding...
I would tell you, he's the closest one of the group sitting here.
Yeah.
That might, I won't speak for all the council members, but there's several have looked at that for me and then you end up looking sideways if you don't understand.
Yeah. Did Steve do that?
Steve helped draw it up there.
I keep with Tazza County, he said he gives him a headache every time he comes into
it. He said, please aren't out there.
I can see. Well, I'm thinking, I don't know, Ms. Stevie, were you, are you contemplating having a autumn summer community meeting shortly?
Yes.
So that'll be the June item that we'll put on there.
I'll put anything you need.
Yeah.
If you have questions or anything you need to know, I'll get our backs and forth.
Okay.
But just like we know, tell me if you need anything.
Absolutely.
I do have a quick question.
While we've got everybody here, let's do that.
I appreciate you coming, both of you. You were talking about selling water in Washington County. What rate does the Russell County PSA sell to the Washington?
We make 10%.
I see, we, the water comes from you guys.
Yeah.
And the provision they make to us.
And is that 10%? Is that the same for Russell County residents and commercial also?
No. We make, we, $2,000 gallon, 31.5% for our base rate, and it's $12.50 for every thousand for that.
Yes, sir. Since Castlewood, one of such stories, Russell County PSA combined, we have the same rate throughout the camp. At one time, it was, Castlewood had one rate.
Mm-hmm.
PSA, but we, it's the same over at the camp.
So your basic rate, huh, is 31?
31.25%.
Based on how many gallons?
2,000.
2,000?
12.50 for every thousand, like that.
12.50 for every thousand, after that. Okay.
And that's what we sell, like we sell water to the local community. We just make 10% on what costs us to sell from the grid. That's what we make on hit.
Where you get, where do you get the water?
From the water plant, the Redstone.
Oh, okay. Gotcha.
Can we have, can we have those rates on paper, in black and white, before we have a meeting?
Well, I think we actually, did we see?
We gave us, we got the contract, but I don't know if it has, I agree with you just listed that.
We can do that, we're giving one.
Yeah, just help me.
No problem.
I got the email we're passing here, the rate percentage.
Okay.
If you can give us all rates, just send, if you don't care, send them to Drew.
Okay.
Mr. Short?
I'll be emailing.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, do we, is there anyone, thanks again, Lonzo, good to see you.
Good to see you guys.
How'd you sit there so quiet, Lonzo?
I'll be back.
I told you, I said, I didn't get in trouble.
Y'all don't want to hear my...
I need to hear some of them.
Okay.
That's wrong.
Okay, Kevin, the Brown, do a little.
I really just have a little quarterly report that I'm embarrassed to admit that I've been doing this and giving it to the supervisor for, I'm not going to tell you how long, but it's like at some point it hit me like, gosh, I can just give it to the towns, too. So they have a kind of little update on what we've been doing. And there's more available if you, if you need one or you want one. But just a sort of quarterly update on, I mean, it's a little bit of numbers, it's a free picture, what our big push has been. And I was on vacation the first week in October, so this report didn't come out until the middle of October, so you're not getting this one too late. Our NEA big read was the big thing we were doing in October, and we really appreciate y'all pushing that on your sign. We've had several businesses in town, that's probably one of my last acts where we like to take a quick picture of the bank sign and years like, look, they were advertising for us. But, and if you've got any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but please come visit us, send people to us.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Before we get into new business, Mr. Taylor, I believe, has to leave a little early here in the city. So I'd ask council, do you have, do we need to go, any legal matters we mentioned to discuss with him before we get into the main part of the agenda? Kevin, do you have anything you need to talk to us about in close session?
At this point, no.
Any other member have anything? This guy, legal? All right. Before we move forward then. First item of new business is we had our ARPA committee meeting, I think it was last week, they all run together anymore. So at this time, Chair, I'll turn the recommendations, part of this, over to the Chair of the Committee, Mr. Gilmour.
Thanks, Mayor. Just to recap, the ARPA committee meeting on October 29th, we reviewed our recurring approved eligible expense items. We also added our vendors and suppliers of materials for infrastructure upgrades. Some of those vendors were CMC, Ferguson, maybe Lighthouse. But all those eligible items also were added along with the inflation cost of chemicals with our water treatment plant. We also approved the sanitation. What was the final number, does the committee remember the final number, Brad, on the sanitation allocation? $50,000 for dumpsters and roll-offs, also seals and rollers cables for trucks as well. We also approved recreational fixtures and furniture. I think the total was $10,000 indoor, $10,000 outdoor. We also allocated approximately $15,000 to the Lebanon Volunteer Fire Department for their request. They had approximately $15,000 worth of requests for equipment, and that was approved by the committee.
Rescue squad.
The rescue squad, the committee makes, needs to make the recommendation of this council. We decided on a $10,000 donation to the Lebanon Lifesaver Crew, and I believe, Mayor, that will require a motion.
I think everything you recommended tonight probably needs to be in the minutes approved.
Okay.
For, I live to keep the trail with the federal reporting.
All right. We'll have all this, we should have all this itemized from the minutes, Mayor, as well. Is there anything else, committee, that we had as far as allocations or approvals for items? We approved, we approved the town hall upgrades as well.
You mentioned the fire department.
Yeah, you got the fire department. We already approved the park, but it doesn't.
Approved two SCAG motors for streets.
Were we going to just, we were just going to do one of those, I think, for parks and recreation, is that correct, Elijah?
One for Parks Rec, one for street park, we split it. I think everything else, everything else on our list, Mr. Gilmour, been pre-approved in previous council and ARPA meetings.
That's true. You get, I believe, minutes you could...
With that being said, Mayor, I'll, I'll make the motion to, to withdraw or deduct all the items as discussed, including the $10,000 for Lebanon Volunteer Fire Department from the ARPA funds.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any further say aye?
Is it $10,000 to the Lebanon Fire Department?
15.
15, the Fire Department, the Lebanon Lifesaver Crew, Lebanon $10,000.
Yeah, that's, hey, you're next. We'll probably have another, we'll have another ARPA committee meeting until January, is that what you're thinking?
Yes, sir.
And let's see, Drew, now, we keep all this running spreadsheet to make sure we get all this when we report it to the item with beds on the ARPA funds, correct? Okay. Anything else for ARPA, for council? All right. ARPA, does everyone know when we say ARPA, what we're talking about right away? The American Rescue Plan and funding that came down to all cities and towns, that's the funds that we're speaking of. Next item is the bill opening for the water tank maintenance program.
We just want to...
Oh, we went together? Okay. I thought we took out here.
Okay. Thank you.
Southern Corrosion Incorporated, looks like a... Why are doing this, Drew? Remind us what this is, is this deal is called?
It's for the tank maintenance program, the painting the exterior and interior of the four water tanks, storage water tanks in town, as well as some clean outs. But it's also through our 10-year contracts, so they'll have inspections and maintenance for the next 10 years on those as well.
So this is a 10-year plan, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
About $44,919 a year. Is that sale rate?
I think it was actually better than the original cost.
It is, it's less than what we thought, a little bit.
What was the amount?
$44,919. Now, Drew, make sure I'm reading this right. $44,919 for the next 10 years, a year for 10 years.
Yes. The original was $500,000.
It was, that's right, it is cheaper.
Yeah.
Anybody else, so we got no other bids on this minute, did we?
No.
Okay. So we have to decide, I guess, if we're moving forward, if we're doing grants for this, which I think we talked about. I think we're some, y'all, did we have some discussion in the ARPA committee about this? Would love to read that. You remember, Scott?
We did, Mayor. We talked about it would be eligible for ARPA funds.
Okay.
We also talked, you know, when we were talking about water, water sewer infrastructure, Mr. Short informed us that this is something that has to be done. Our tanks will have to be maintained, part of that, maintaining those tanks is painting those tanks. My understanding is it's a VDH requirement to keep certain...
Part of the health, yeah.
To keep certain standards. So that was, that was the discussion, from my understanding, Mayor, that would be eligible for ARPA funding.
Okay. Well, that's something we're probably going to have to do, I mean, under the direction of health, we certainly don't want to have any issue with the Department of Health and with our citizens, making sure that our water is safe and maintained.
And that was the only bid, and what was the name of the bid, Mayor?
Southern Corrosion.
I'll make that motion to accept that bid, Southern Corrosion.
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 Mm-hmm.
I would ask, that's contingent of a review by council, where it's a 10-year contract.
Mm-hmm.
And I guess we can discuss, I mean, I like those funds annually to take them out of ARPA funds while eligible.
All right, Elijah.
I'll second that, Mayor.
Okay. Mayor, can you add that to your committee agenda, too? So with that motion, let's say the motion approves, Scott and Elijah, are we authorized and Drew to communicate with this company to come up with the, and actually, the schedule to start this, or related to the council?
Now, when we, when we originally received quotes before, prior to beating it out there, I think they did provide a rough schedule. And I'm hoping that that packet's got that in it.
It does, it's got it in it.
But what...
I just want to make sure he can move, do we need, if this passes, does, can Drew move forward with this company, starting the process?
I think so, Kevin, once Kevin gives them the okay, if there's no issues with...
Kevin Till.
Kevin Till, excuse me.
That's what, that's what I was going to say, I like...
Give him that.
I like review that I said.
And Drew?
And...
That's it, that's what it looks.
They were also, frankly, they were also flexible on these things also.
They were, they sure were. So we have a motion and second on the floor, any further discussion?
I would say one other thing, Mayor. One thing I would like to see in this, Drew, in conversations prior to signing the contract, is that there's no penalty paying some money upfront, in case there is ARPA funds available or other funding in the infrastructure that maybe doesn't extend out to 10 years. I just want to make sure that that's not, you know, scheduled, there's no problem with prepaying.
And actually, maybe now, Drew, with what happened last week, we've got ARPA, I'm not sure what all the requirements will be, but water and sewer is under that latest effort, they just passed, what, what's it called? I don't know what the acronym is.
Construction Jobs Act, maybe?
Yeah. Make, Build Better, Build America.
Build Better.
Yeah. So just keep an eye out on how that, I think it's going to be administered, well, I'm pretty sure it won't, it'll be administered. Yeah, so, just keep an eye out on how that, I think it's gonna be administered, well, I'm pretty sure it won't, it'll be administered in a different format than ARPA likes straight. But I bet that the Virginia Department of Health is gonna have, they're gonna have access to this part, I mean, as far as distribution, okay? So we got two, plus there's other grants out there, we talked to Jim Bobble about two, Drew, okay? Okay, any further discussion on the motion? All favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say aye. Okay, the theater pavilion discussion, several of us were there and met with Nathan Brown. I, I'll just, I'll start the discussion and then I'll yield to whomever else was there. A lot of the work will be done under that, his design, utilizing our labor and our equipment. The, the, probably the, the largest event for the product will be the pavilion itself up on top. So, that is something, I don't know if we actually have a final dollar on yet, Scott or Elijah, Drew, I was at that meeting that day. We were all down there, Drew. It's probably somewhere between eighty or a hundred.
Yeah, I have the, the three things, the, the three departments felt they could do everything, three things that were gonna be bid out for. The landscaping, the hardware of the handrail on the steps, and like you said, the structure and.
Up, up top, okay.
But I don't know if a, a dollar amount was decided on there, guys, or part of it or not.
And I don't know if we're there yet anyway, Scott, but I'll turn back over to you, of course, what we need to do. Any discussion left?
We discussed maybe going ahead and doing some of the earthwork down there. Regardless if we do a pavilion on the lot, I think everybody would like to see the, uh, some Carnegie space, regardless if there's a pavilion or not, even if it's grass. To build that up adjacent to the theater, at least some many feet back from the sidewalk. We also talked about parking, uh, towards Virginia, is it Virginia Street, Virginia Avenue, Virginia Street? We talked about, you know, some of the things that we could do down there ourselves, uh, with the parking lot, the curving, we discussed the water and sewer lines, how they ran. And what kind of complications that we may have by developing that property. I think we left it with the, with Nathan, our landscape architect, possibly giving our guys some contours on the property, on maybe to start preliminary earthwork. I'd like to see that done regardless if we end up doing a pavilion with a canopy. The, the highest expense was probably, or the most, the biggest expense was wanting to be the canopy, the, uh, over top of the pavilion, covered, covered area over the pavilion. I think that Nathan had talked to Mr. Short about getting, he had to get a structural engineer involved to help come up with some, uh, some design work and specs. It's not something that Nathan was able to do. And I think Mr. Short approved that expense to go ahead and move forward, so we left there with a goal of nothing else, to get some, get some contours on the, on the property for the earthwork. And also to be able to come up with some design in order to bid it out, just to get quotes.
Just to see where we're at.
To get cost estimates. So I don't think, you know, I think all of us are concerned about the price tag. Uh, I know that we haven't finished the theater yet, and that's something we'll discuss a little bit later. But, uh, but the, but the basic earthwork to get, to get the top of the lot built up and the parking lot, and also be able to move forward with getting cost, doing what we needed to do to get some stuff on paper, to get some, uh, to get some cost estimates is where we're at.
Okay. There's no action required for this to move, this is.
I don't think so, you drew.
No, my biggest thing was just to see if we're gonna go ahead and get started on the groundwork, like you said, because, like I said. You look in your information.
Just the structural engineers?
Osborne is the structural engineer. This nine thousand one hundred and two is, is estimate for the entire thing, if we, if we do that. So right now, I've talked with Scott and Mayor and all these guys out there, right now, he's just working hourly on getting some bid, some cost estimates and that kind of stuff down at Nathan. So that's the biggest thing, I just wanna make sure this is moved forward before Nathan may hours.
What you did?
For, and so.
Is this the group that's gonna be able to tell our guys the contours and the top up?
Nathan, Nathan can do that, but James has to be with Nathan to develop the structure, to be able to maintain the weight of that structure.
And I had the conversation with Mayor Drew, and need to answer your question about moving forward. I don't wanna do any permanent concrete work yet, till we know that we're supported, but I would like to start some earthwork as far as getting that top built up.
Right.
And, uh, what did you, what did you call it, the different?
Just different tiers.
Tiers.
You didn't use.
Terraces?
Terraces, yes.
Terraces.
So you just hope to have earthwork filled up, just so you can pretty much have a landing right there?
Right, exactly, at a minimum, at a minimum to have a landing off the sidewalk, the Carnegie space.
And grade that, and grade that part along that?
And we're gonna need the material from the bottom, uh, which makes sense to go in there.
And that's the thing, too, when Nathan gets his stuff, he gets a grade set on that, and Roger can set the ground escalator. A map of. The high level, seventy-three hundred, is that the estimate, an hourly estimate? Seventy-three hundred would be the total of this, taking that bottom part into hourly, that's eighteen-twenty, taking it off.
Yep.
Anything else on this matter? Okay, our, the town, the next item is their Thanksgiving Day dinner event at Lebanon High School, sponsored by the town, and working with, who's the lady, I don't know, who's the one, forget her name.
Nora.
Yeah.
Cheyenne.
We're working on Cheyenne, um, Thoro, and Angie.
I believe you want this on the agenda, Miss Taylor, so we'll turn it over to you, Miss Taylor.
Um, I did, we did come up with a flyer that should be done tomorrow. Clarkson's putting us some flyers for the rescue squad, the, um, Sheriff's Office for our police department, um, to hand out to people who might need a meal delivered, or it might be good for them to get, um, a meal, um, or come for a meal, to get delivered or to be able to come to the meal. Um, we do have a schedule of events that will start about, we're gonna start welcoming people about ten-thirty, ten-forty-five. And we will have, like, we have somebody to come and do the singing, they're gonna have a couple songs, and then we'll have a message, and then dinner will start, um, about twelve, fifteen, twelve-thirty. Um, what we need for the town is, I contacted Chain, and we have enough tables, and we need to use those tables and then as many folding chairs as we have. Um, we need those to be taken out to the, um, high school and set up on Wednesday, sometime Wednesday afternoon. Uh, and then we'll also need them brought back, um, whether Friday, if they come in Friday, or do it first thing Monday morning. Uh, to bring them all back from the high school. So we'll need the towns helping doing that, to have our guys do it. Um, and then also, as many of us or the town employees that would like to, um, volunteer. We have our driving team, people going out and delivering the meals, but we need help with greeting, welcoming people, just basically talking to people. Um, we need help serving the different parts of the meal, and then we'll need help throughout the day with washing dishes and cleaning up. And we have divided it into an hour and a half increments for service.
So, you, I was thinking, would you like for myself and council members to be there around eleven-thirty for the event? Is that what you're requesting?
If you're available to do so, yeah.
Okay, all right.
And then, and I'll ask Drew to have our, our guys deliver the tables and, um, out there to the high school, and set them up with, with our chairs, and I know that Chain just ordered more chairs.
Should we, do you want that flyer put on our social media pages?
Yes.
The webpage and the, uh, Facebook, you want both?
Yes, yes. It's a Thanksgiving thing, yeah.
Well, Monday morning, maybe, early enough, get the table back out, I might?
I think so, as long as we can arrange it with, um, Mr. Long, that they'll just get there first thing in the morning.
All right, I'll put salt Thursday and Friday, half a day Wednesday's there. Just give a billion, yeah, that they're early that morning.
What was the time you said, Mayor, eleven-thirty?
Eleven-thirty, at least. Is that when the program starts? As far as the music, what you said, the music and the message?
Mm-hmm, yeah, the, um, I'm gonna pull that up, or, um, ten-forty-five, um, is the time that we're gonna start serving as far as being there to welcome people, eleven-thirty. The music will probably start before then, um, I'm sorry, the message will start at eleven-thirty, and then dinner will be at twelve.
So you want to serve ten-forty-five?
Yes.
Ten-forty-five, I got you, okay. Who sings at this time?
Um, Thomas Taylor.
That's who did last year.
Yeah.
Here for, could be excellent, then.
Yeah.
He's good.
And then James is delivering a message.
How many, they're gonna feed, how many can you feed?
We are planning dinner for four hundred. We had a lot of leftover food a couple years ago, because we planned for extra. Um, and, so we're planning for four hundred, which was the same number as the year before, the bicentennial. Um, we believe that most of that will be in delivery, but we are planning on feeding at the high school about a hundred and fifty people. So, you know, we've got, you know, great help with Thoro, Angie, and Cheyenne as far as planning. We have our next meeting, um, the week before, so probably next week, just to iron out any kinks that we would have. But, the main, the, uh, main help I need is the tables, getting the tables out there and then delivered back to the town, and then, um, anybody that would want to volunteer. You know, to come out there and serve, you know, we have that opportunity to do that, if anybody wants to. That, that's not a big.
Anything else, any other questions regarding this event? Cedar, two thousand twenty-two Cedar Fest, give you a update as I know it. Uh, and the Gospel Event, which is the weekend before, has been arranged, he has about, he already has the groups, there's about eight to ten, I believe. Uh, begins at two and finishes at eight. Uh, we have secured on Saturday, the eleventh. Same event, uh, top, one of the top hit of the years, is Harmony, has been secured. And Crawford and Power, probably some of you may have seen that or heard of them, they, most recently had traveled, uh, they've been to Bristol Motor Speedway races. And I saw a flyer or something on the news with Governor Rick Youngkin, I think he played at a lot of his events across Commonwealth. Probably, they're a country music group. Crawford and Power. Crawford and Power.
So would it be, would it be Crawford and Power and then Harmony?
Yeah, I'd say, yeah, Harmony's the headliner, right now. Uh, did request for the Bluegrass Friday evening, nothing's confirmed, uh, top of some folks in the bluegrass world around here. Just threw out these three names, uh, Awesome Range, Blue Highway, and Lonesome River Band, are the three that he's just checking on. If there are other bluegrass bands that you all are familiar with, if you could give me those names sometime, either via live or just texting to me, I'll pass them on. For the Friday evening Bluegrass event. And that's the last, now, we talked about, I believe we have. So on Saturday, the eleventh, we have two performers, uh, we always have an opening act of local talent. Do we need to find a third group for Saturday?
How's your opening act, do you know?
Not gonna be somebody local that we've been dealing with, I don't know. But last year, you know, we talked about, we couldn't get them back, was the Steel Driving Band, is that from Steel? What's it, is it?
Cooking.
Steel Cooking. That was the group from last, last year, uh, from the Sheriff's Office, you know, or?
White Dance.
What was the name of that group?
Oh, Co-Camp.
Co-Camp, alive. So, you know, we've got time to get to our local bands, and my question is, is there a third, do you want to secure a third band? For the eleventh?
Yes.
Did we check with Forty-Nine Winchester?
Have not.
That was my question. And could we directly reach out to them, maybe, Mayor?
Have we set a budget on Cedar Fest in there?
We did, I thought. But, remember, we haven't done anything, this is, we've done nothing for the fourth. And we have not secured the Beach Party Band. I think there's some discussion on the Beach Party, uh, that maybe look, why do I think that, is it the tans, did somebody just want to have the tans looked at? A beach band? Or do we want to stay with the group we've had the last two or three years? We'll do something different, is what I need to know.
Yeah, let's try something different. Thought they did a great job last year.
Got rained out, that's the only event that really got rained out this year, wasn't it?
We were very fortunate.
The, uh, it's eighty to a hundred, Elijah. That's what we said, of course, now that. That's including, I don't know, it's our part, you know, we get about, and working with our donations, I've been able to get annually, about fifty thousand dollars from the local businesses.
That's what I have in my notes, that we agreed, we discussed a hundred thousand dollars would be a budget, and that's gonna be the talent that brings the food everything. Um, and that we will not sponsor about fifty thousand dollars.
So do we have a split, do we, do we have a budget for Friday and Saturday, and we discussed what we're gonna do there, and we just?
It's a lot, uh, we have, I have a specific budget, having a determine on what we want to spend for Bluegrass, is that what you're asking?
That's what I'm asking, like, like, if we figured out what we're spending on, on the main event Saturday, and then what are we gonna, what, if we're looking for bands, extra bands, we kinda need to know a budget on what we have to spend Friday night.
Well, what I like, uh, we probably need to, I need to get, uh, I know that Crawford, there's four thousand, I don't know the figure, it seemed like somewhere in our texts or emails that I've gotten from Kent. Mayor, do you remember the price, did he, did we ever have a price for Harmony? What was it?
I think it was twenty-seven-five.
Twenty-seven, so we're at thirty, so. It sounds close. The Bluegrass shows, I think, Elijah, unless I'm saying the mistake, won't be as much as the Saturday shows. However, um, and then we've got, I, I really, I think we need to really have a final, our goal ought to be to have a final lineup by December, because there's a timeframe in there that we have to get, who's the, who, who? there's a timeframe in there that we have to get, who's the, who, who, who we deal with, Mary, on the flyer, who does the, our flyers?
Amber.
So like, how lo, how much time does she need?
Um, in order to get it out?
Yeah, I mean, so we can have it by January, start getting word out.
Yeah, we need, and she might be able to, I can reach out to her to see what she would need. I don't know that, um, the last, when I emailed her, it's last time.
Well, let's, let's do this. Let me find out.
But we do need to get it sent. I was emailing her December sixth.
So, she said when?
Uh, no, I, last was December sixth.
Last year, okay. Well, this is, we're meeting, today is the eighth.
Brad, did you have any more suggestions for Friday night?
But, yeah, anybody got any more bluegrass suggestions?
What did we check, Doyle Lawson?
No, that's, I just, the three that I told you.
Jeff Brown, Doyle Lawson, is retiring, uh, December will be his final show in, uh, I think Jekyll Island, Georgia, I think, this December. Come back toward the end.
Jeff Brown?
Yeah.
Okay.
In a minute, and I'll tell you the four bands.
I'll tell you what to do, if you can, in the next few days, just text me, uh, interests that you wish to find cost of. And we probably just need to have, I'm gonna ask, uh, what we, if we could, Deanna, let's just have a joint water and sewer and recreation committee meeting to address the Cedar Fest events as well. Is that agreeable with everybody? Is that good?
Brad, do you have a contact with the Forty-Nine Winchester? I can get one, that's pretty easy.
Yeah, they played, they went long ago, they stayed in Johnson City, then they're, what's that thing on the tracks, the cow?
Rides, probably rides.
Yeah, they're, yeah, and I'm sure they're reasonable. And be thinking if there's, uh, we probably need to know if we want a third act for Saturday, of course, as Liza said, we'd ask, we just need to find out what, what our budget's gonna be for those two and the fourth. And, uh, any ideas you have on the Beach Party, okay?
Did we check, uh, price, I remember there was a Creedman's Band on there.
Well, we did, but I understand, originally, we thought it was some of the original members.
Yeah.
And it's not, it's a cover band, but if you want to pursue it, we can.
I think it'd be worth, I'd like hearing their.
It'd be a good, I think it'd be good, it'd be a good energy show for mainstreams.
A lot, a lot of people, a lot of people know their songs, I think it'd, I think it'd be a drive to get people here. I agree with that, Mayor, let's check, let's just check on it.
I think we got, we got them and they're reasonable.
For the tier that we want them to play at. We should be able to get, we should be able to get a general idea of what, the cost of everything else that's inside of the entertainment.
We saw it.
I thought we should be able to get a reasonable idea of what the cost, except for entertainment, is, I mean, we can narrow down what we have to spend for entertainment. Uh, I think it's gonna help us pick and choose what, what groups we, uh, we decide on.
I'm sorry, man. Yeah.
I think we should have some project.
It is like this way, yeah, yeah. Okay. Uh, are we ready to move forward? All right, Christmas parade events, uh, Miss Stanley?
Well, I guess I just wanted to, um, kind of, Diane, I know that everything with, as far as the parade, it's handled through the Lions Club. Yes. Um, but as far as our part for the Christmas parade, um, so when the parade's over, um, we will have Santa Claus.
Ms. Riddick?
Okay, um, and are we using the middle school for pictures?
I'm hoping we're doing the same as we have in the past.
Yeah.
Depending on the weather, I mean, you know, we talked about doing it down at, at the stage.
We did it one year.
And it's cold, but we need, I think we, if the weather permits, I like it down there.
Yeah.
I think the kids like it.
At the stage or?
Yeah, yeah. If we do it outside, but I think we gotta have the middle schools back at, no, no, I agree.
Okay, so we're just gonna, so, eh, we're just gonna, it went smoother inside?
It did?
It did, it went smoother inside and we had a place to, um, you know, decorate and then once we decorated, we didn't have to worry about the pictures. Do we still have a backdrop? We had that backdrop two years ago, I just don't know if we might need to order a new one for the pictures.
Just ask Billy.
Okay, so we have all of our trees and our decorations and our backdrop. Um, and by using the middle school, it sets up a good picture, you know, so that the kids come in with their parents and.
That's fine, it's a middle school.
Okay.
We have to do a community use board for a group, contact Nathan after.
We still want to do the, uh, fire pits or?
And that's what I was just gonna make sure, let me get back to Sam on real quick. Um, can we contact Kristen Ball to see if he can take some pictures? Yes.
Kristen might wanna do the infringement.
He, he does, he's done before with our, with our backdrop.
He did, he's in our contract right now, isn't he?
Yeah. Um, and then Angie and I will go out and decorate that, um, Sunday before the parade, I'll just need somebody to meet us out there to get in. So we can get in and decorate and we'll, um, all the decorations that we have, I know Billy has them stored, we'll just need them out there. Whenever they can get them out there and we'll, um, set them up and decorate. Um, and then, do we have any candy bags left or do we need to, yeah, thousands of them, okay, and so we'll need those candy bags? Or those little treat bags, they're treat bags, there's not any candy in them, they're treat bags, okay. Um, okay, so now going to, um, brides of the fire pits. Is the, um, fire department gonna be able to do?
They'll be coming.
Fire, the, okay.
They're control rooms.
Okay. Um. And are you gonna do smores also?
Yes.
Okay, I'm, I'm.
Just like we did in the past.
Okay, um.
I think our local business sponsored that.
Bonanza did hot chocolate, didn't they?
Well, and then.
I think, I think, uh, Susan and John and McCoy Insurance sponsored the smores.
Oh, okay, okay.
The church had the hot chocolate.
Well, and so I just, I, I remember that the fire department had something, they were right there.
And I believe there'll be more sponsors this year too.
Okay, so my next question is gonna be, are we, have we been, are we gonna be contacting, um, businesses who wanna come and set up or maybe sponsor something like we have in the past? Um, are we gonna have food trucks there? Um, are we gonna, the choir two years ago sang, are we gonna have music there? I mean, I just, how big or small, how, were we thinking about doing it?
I mean, they got food trucks lined up, some of them are, you know.
Not, I don't know.
Yeah, that gives you shame.
We need to, because those food trucks, that's what keeps people at those events. Uh, the Haunting on Main, there was several people came out even with bad weather, but the complaint that I heard was, wow, I wish there was something to eat.
Right.
So they were in and then back out.
Right.
Because it's right at dinnertime, so I think, I think food trucks, uh.
And I think the people, the food trucks canceled because of the weather, at the Haunting on Main.
Okay.
And we can set up there in the bus lane like we did in.
Yeah, so we need Shane.
Shane, get up and Shane, have food trucks at parade.
Auntie Bruce?
They used to come, they come in time though, but I don't know, they just come in wash.
What I'll say, but I'll say.
Okay, um, and then, so Heather did all that and that's, I guess, Heather contacted, um, do you want me to reach out to Angie, um, Carpenter, to see if she wants to reach out to people as far as businesses in town, to see if they wanna do, in churches, if they wanna do, um, hot chocolate? Or do we wanna ask Shane to do that?
I think that should be Shane's job.
I'd say if, I'd say Angie talked to the, the Chamber folks, but Shane, you definitely need to line up the food trucks.
I think he's, I mean, Diane, or ask, it's supposed to be him. Didn't we ask him to?
First I heard of.
He's to have them on, you have a supervisor or something, doesn't want it, you're gonna have a food meeting.
Sounds like recreation.
So, uh, for the food trucks, is that what you were saying, for the businesses, they?
I'm good either way.
You wait, you ask the Chamber.
Whatever you think's gonna be a fit, whatever you think. She had, she had talked to her four different food trucks and, uh, vendors that bought their business licenses, set up on the Haunting on Main. They canceled because of the weather, but they already bought them, so I imagine since they bought them this year, they'll show back up too if she contacted.
Well, do, I still like Shane to coordinate that with, I'm gonna give him, I think he needs to.
I, I'm gonna have.
Be involved with that.
Yeah, Shane to do the food trucks and I'll have Angie call the businesses to see.
Yeah.
Businesses and their vendors. And Angie's already made, um, she helped out by making, did you all get a copy of, I need to send it to you, of it right now. I'll send you both, if that's okay.
Yes.
Um, and, and the, uh, the Christmas flyer is already done.
Christmas what?
Flyer for the parade.
Do you want Shane to contact the high school about the choir?
Or some kind of music, what kind of music would you, would you want a DJ out there, somebody to set up and play Christmas music?
What about a band, uh, just a, just a metal?
Yeah, I mean, that's right, I wasn't sure, you know, I, I think it would be really nice if we had some kind of music set up there.
On the cams?
Mm-hmm, just right there, I mean, at, at least enough to, to where you could hear, that's, I guess, to where you can hear it.
Do a DJ with Christmas.
I'd say Tom's tape would do that good.
I'd say, I think you could do, you, if you just have a speaker with Christmas music going in the background, that'd be plenty.
That'd be a lot, yeah.
Okay, so, um, Doro has his contact information.
Your tops, I'll get the seven if you want.
Oh, okay. Do you wanna contact him to see if he'd be interested in doing some music for the?
Yeah.
Yeah. I have a question, Mayor, um, that parade is on Monday.
Uh-huh.
And I wouldn't think of changing it this year, but is there a reason we have it on a Monday, you know?
Because of all the other towns around, the whole county, all the towns have parades, do their parades and are scheduling the people that are coming in around our parade. So it's been Monday, the council actually noted a few years back that Christmas parade, obviously, will be the first Monday of December. I mean, that's, that's the history that's come up.
I was talking to food trucks and music and all those vendors, I just, I thought we had a better turnout. Along, for longevity wise, people staying later, if we had it on a Friday, uh, but if that's the case. I guess I, I, there's no way I would try to change it for this year, obviously. If we're even asked to.
So, okay, that takes care of my two, you know, the biggest concerns as far as with the Thanksgiving meal, um, getting the tables out there, decorating, have all those things that we'll be decorating for. Um, and then hopefully we'll get enough volunteers to serve the food.
Are you showing them volunteers for the?
I just haven't had anybody sign up yet, um, but I don't have the people from Cedar Point plug in and, um, Gracewood is signing up this Sunday.
So did you send a flyer to other churches, any of my family?
Well, but at the, we have, and I think that we have a couple other people that are, are coming, I think I just have to plug in. I, we were really good two years ago with volunteers doing, doing it this way, so I think we'll be okay, you know, I mean, I might have to send out an SOS, you know.
I think Sarah Paul's got some people signed up.
And I think that Doro goes to, and I think that she's gonna grab some people to bring, goes to L C S.
Did we speak to the Christmas parade marshal, see if he was okay with it?
Right, hello. I think we tried to tell him about her, yeah.
Rachel.
Excuse me, Rachel. About parade marshal.
Contact him.
Was I supposed to, because I did, I'm.
Just make sure he's okay with it.
Women don't have one.
I made myself a note, yeah.
And then, how about, will he provide his own car, is that the only thing that goes, or does the Lions Club get something for him?
Do you think they do?
Probably voice, Joe is not a convertible.
Councilman Linder has a golf cart.
Who has a, uh, Joe with Lee Sweet. Okay, yeah.
Anybody else, Miss Stanley?
Um, just the control. And also a lot of talking.
Did you require her as you go?
I think that is. Like, I was concerned about the Thanksgiving and then the Christmas parade, I just wanna make sure. I think Angie did, was wanting to talk to Shane about it and Shane said that he didn't know anything about the Christmas event, so, that's why.
You just want, now say it again.
Uh, Sha, Angie had talked to Shane about the Christmas event and he said he wasn't aware that we were doing anything with the Christmas event, so that's why I wanted to discuss it.
We told him to get food trucks, did we not, Tommy? What she think? This was the first year of Kent Christmas events, that's all I'll say.
I have to know this, but.
I'm just, I'm only, we told him to separate the wire and we told him to check on Amy.
I think it was a lot.
Might need to produce the venue calendar.
Straight on, boy.
Right.
Straight up.
I'll get that other family, family council meeting.
We told him, he's supposed to.
Landing gear. My crash landing.
I'm just curious, where are you in the decorating, Stanley?
I'm saying.
They'll be happy to attend if they needed to.
Well, that'll be over by then, next time, yeah.
No, I mean, he'd be happy to attend the supervisory meeting, is what I meant.
Oh, okay.
No, I meant, he's attending the supervising.
You have one tomorrow, right?
Tomorrow.
Yeah. Uh, we gotta get him, he's interested to take care of it.
Diane, I'm gonna send you these.
Now, Miss Stanley, with everything that we talked about on Christmas, do we need to have a flyer about our Christmas event?
Um, let me.
Should we develop a flyer or have we had a flyer in the board?
Well, um, Angie worked on it.
Everyone's giving it a little bit of news.
And, uh, yeah, we'll need it in.
Well, in the news and on all of our news.
Okay, so it says, um, join us, um, downtown London for a Christmas parade, celebrate the miracle. December sixth, presented by the Town London, London Lions Club, the parade will line up at five thirty. This year, parade marshal is Norman Rufford.
Yeah, that's good, congratulations, but, uh, Scott, call him while we're here.
You might need to call. Um, and then you were invited to stay afterward, after the parade for an old fashioned Christmas on the lawn of London Middle School. There'll be food vendors, fire pits and smores and more. Kids can visit and get photographed with Mr. and Mrs. Pauls and the L M S auditorium. So I think that says everything we need. No, no, I'm getting ready to send it to her.
Oh, okay, okay.
She, uh, well.
She'll have to put it in the paper, it's too late, but one week's all we got, don't we?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay, or two weeks.
So it's coming to you. So I just, I think that maybe somewhere that, that ball was dropped, so I just need to take care of that.
You picked it right up, thank you. All right. Yes, is there any other items we may have missed?
No, I do think we need to get a, when Shane gets to the food trucks, I would like to get a list of those that have, uh, accepted the invitation. That way we can get that out for the public to see also.
Absolutely. We're late to get them. We're late to get them right now. Three weeks, two weeks? Eh, we'll see.
Looks like they don't, looks like they don't, Ruth, they couldn't make it any other time but that first Monday in December, I mean, that was.
But they don't want to come tonight, I'd say, but they would have come here, they did one time.
Hopefully, that'll be the case, too.
Time for we do the Christmas parade, why don't you do that?
I'm done.
That's the summer time. All right, we have Brad, the Association, Appalachian Association Soccer donation. For the, for the treatment.
All right, I'd like to, we discussed opportunities to help this association, and we, we determined the best fit would be for us to make a one thousand dollar donation to the association, and I'd like to put that in a form of a motion to give Appalachian Soccer Association a donation of one thousand dollars.
And that's to go toward the treatment.
Treatment of the.
Soccer field?
Soccer field soccer.
Okay.
I'll say it again, Mayor.
Motion is second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those saying say?
Is that what it'll be used for, for sure?
That's what the request was, to get the seeds and to get, to maintain that at the site. Okay, Drew, looking here, you, it seems to me that your reports get longer.
A little bit.
Yeah. We're going to take a break. Recession ten, fifteen minutes.